Part of that we thank you for life itself. We thank you for another opportunity, oh God, to serve you. We thank you, God, for just blessing us with such beautiful weather and just a beautiful day, Lord. Heavenly Father, we pray and we remember the family in our sister city, Sheriff Painter's family, Lord. We pray, oh God, that you will keep them, Lord, that you will provide strength where it's needed. We also pray, oh God, that you will just give us the knowledge and the strength to go about this meeting in a way that you would be pleased, oh God, and that the citizens will be proud, Lord. We thank you and we praise you and we give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay, I guess on the agenda today is Hal, Traffic Master's Plan, or, excuse me, Tom, or whomever wants to lead me, one leading, one hand down.
I'm just so calm downstairs sitting and I thought maybe we're not having.
He was thinking about that.
I was waiting on the bus, right?
Thank you Mayor Proten and Council and we appreciate the opportunity to come to you again. We've got a presentation on our Transportation Master Plan. We've had one with you on the CIP Program Development and this presentation is to discuss the conditions of our streets and maintenance type programs and touch on that. We'll be coming to you one more time with a kind of an overview of the whole master plan for an internal adoption. But so today we have Kevin Stone, a key member of the Kimmely Horn team, working with us on this. They've done a really good job here. I think we've learned a lot from what they've done here and so I'll turn it over to him and then we can walk through some things.
Appreciate that, Tom. I mean, we're just honestly happy to work with such a good group of people over here. You make our jobs easier. So we appreciate everything you guys do for us and everything there. So I'll give you guys my cards just in case anybody wants any contact information after this. I think I've got the right number here, four, maybe? I'll give you one back there if you'd like.
Real quick, while you're doing that, I'll mention to Pedy, I've got the contact information for New Gen to get to. I've got that personally.
All right, so without delay, as Tom teed up for us, this portion of the overall master plan, we term system operations, so our pavement system, the operations, the condition of our pavement, more traditionally termed a pavement management system, the purpose, which I'll get into here in a moment, but I guess the overall, the overarching thing to note here is that this is just one key piece of the puzzle, going into the Transportation Master Plan to help determine the types of projects and rehabilitation we need to do, to help keep our streets operable, serving our traffic and operating in safe condition. So this is purely looking at the pavement and streets from a condition standpoint and without delay, we'll get into it. So agenda, as I briefly mentioned, we'll do a quick background on the project, specifically the system operations or pavement management piece of the puzzle. Payment management, what is it? Why do we do it? How do we do it? The street inventory, you know, what we have, what makes up our pavement network, what's the age, different classifications, street types, things like that. And all this is building into, to tell us what our current pavement condition is. And then from there, we can help determine maintenance rehabilitation needs, what we're doing currently, what we're recommending, like go through a couple photos of maybe some key areas, just some examples of what we saw during, you know, so you can kind of get a feel for, oh, I see this every day. This is kind of what we're recommending here. So background and purpose. So overall, there's a master plan focusing on implementation of projects to prepare the city for the next 10 years. Payment management specifically, so what it is in a nutshell, if I could sum it in one sentence, it is the practice of planning for pavement repairs and maintenance, the goal of maximizing the value in my pavement network. So that could also be termed as not what type of, just what type of work to do, but when to do it and, you know, what type and when to get the most out of our dollars and the most out of our payment money. We start by doing, by doing an inventory, what do we have? We determine the condition. Then from there, we can go, how do we effectively manage and rehab our pavement, like I said, when and how much? Previously, and what a lot of cities historically have done is be sort of reactive in a sense to maintain when the need seems to arrive, arise. And what this, the payment management process teaches us is that you really want to manage, you want to be proactive. Lower cost maintenance upfront is better than high cost maintenance at the end. Here, this is a kind of a quick schematic as to the pavement management process, what it looks like long-term in terms of our condition on the left and our age on the bottom here. So I'll get into this a little bit later, but when we talk about asphalt pavement typically designed to last about 20 years, that's the typical design life that it's designed for. You can see here, there's different levels of maintenance that you can do. This is more of your low cost. Let's say you're doing a crack seal or a seal coat, something very low cost, not invasive, minimal interruption to traffic and a lower cost out of pocket for the city. Repetitive, repetitive maintenance like that in a proactive sense before the, you know, I guess to everybody, to everyday person may just seem, you know, it may not need it yet, but that's when it really needs it the most. So you can avoid spending more dollars later down the road. Because once you get down here and you just start doing things like, let's say, a minor overlay, mill and overlay, or then a full depth reconstruction, you can just see how it increases exponentially. These aren't specific. That's the numbers here and I apologize if you can't read these very well, but you can see the top here, five dollars per square yard. If done early on, can be repeated there and kind of kept in that good range where that same, you know, to get back up to a similar point may cost fifteen dollars per square yard here, or even as much as a hundred for reconstruction. Now, these are just general numbers, but just to show the comparative nature of the different categories of maintenance. So what the process teaches us is that to stay in this range here is going to be better on our wallet in the long run and it's going to be better for preserving your pavements long-term and getting the most out of the original construction of the pavement. Do you guys want to kind of interrupt questions periodically until the end? I guess if anybody does have any, go for it, Tommy, at any point in time.
So Kevin, you said that the typical asphalt is designed to last 20 years.
Correct.
By doing some of these kind of preventative or maintenance type activities, how much, are we just gaining the five years or what's the lengthening of the life of that road?
Sure. So it really depends on, you know, it depends on a few things other than just your typical asphalt, but, you know, traffic, use, heavy, you know, heaviness of use and things like that. But yeah, I mean, as you can see here, you know, we're extending it by a few years at a time. So essentially what you're doing is your, you know, you can reduce things such as re-oxidize your asphalt in the pavement, which is going to prevent things like cracking. So keep it in like a condition for a few years longer. And if you were to spend something like five dollars per square yard four or five times, well, it still drops in the budget compared to a hundred. And let's say you could add another 10 years, 15 years if you're proactive and you're smart about the timing. Another reason that, which I haven't gotten to yet, is important to continue the pavement management process, to update the system every three to five years because some pavements may deteriorate faster than others. It's good to always know, be keeping up with when and where the need arises. So yeah, to give you a general number, I mean, it could be five, could be 15, depending how early you're tackling it. You know, sometimes it's easy to tag, to try to get, or to try to provide this sort of maintenance down in this range and then it's not really quite as effective as you'd want it to be. You may not see the same effect or the same addition of life to your pavement surface.
One of the things that a columnist told us several times is ultimately your base wears out, right? The gravel deteriorates. That's got to play some point into that formula. It starts getting a little complex at that point.
It sure does. And, you know, so there's, that can go into a deeper look at the types of distresses and things that we analyze here. There, you know, there's distresses known as structural or load-related, which that's going to happen after repeat loading, no matter what, whether, you know, even if you're doing a surface seal, a crack seal, it's going, that's still going to happen over time. But by doing preventive measures to, one of the big things is keeping water out, for example. So if you're cracking and doing a surface seal, the less water that gets underneath into the base, the less likely it's going to happen in the near term. But, you know, you can kind of push that into a later 10, 20, 30 years down the road as opposed to having it in five years. If, like, the cracks stay open, water seeping in there, you may see those load-related distresses. And when I say load-related, we're probably all familiar with, you know, wheel rutting, those ruts that form, that alligator cracking, it looks like an alligator, you know, skin. That's going to happen over time. And the less preventive maintenance you do, the more susceptible you are to things like that.
Starts to get away from you because even though you may have done maintenance on cracks, you're going to start getting more and more over time. I mean, it's just not structurally going to solve your problem. And they can take it better than I can. But one of the things when you're talking about these numbers in general and things like, you know, this, we have a really great subgrade. We're building our roads basically on base, you know, so we're putting base on base. So the roads here, in that sense, structurally probably perform better than in some places. But we also have heavier road conditions in a lot of places here than some others. And so, you know, we have some really heavy traffic in some areas.
So with this, you're primarily, are you primarily looking at the major thoroughfares? The more heavily thoroughfares, not residential?
We looked at everything. We did, we did, or they drove all of the major roadways and then they drove a percentage of our residential type of road.
Right. And then another thing to Tom's point, Tom's point is, you know, we have things that play like more heavily traveled areas, but we also have an issue of age as well. You know, they can be, the base is great here and it lasts for a certain amount of time, but once you start getting to those, you know, those higher ages, 30, 40, 50 years old, where the base hasn't been replaced, then there's really not much you can do at that point, aside from a mill overall reconstruction.
Eventually you don't have, definitely you can reconstruct.
Right. And while this is the, this is the mindset, this is like, you know, the kind of thought process we want to get into, we do have an issue of older pavement in our inventory, which I'll get into actually, I think, on the next slide. Good segue. Oh, pardon the sign after this, but I'll get to that next, but I guess to elaborate on Tom's point he just made, the way we inspected, there's a testing method called ASTM. It's D6433. You probably don't need to know all that, but what that is, is it's developed originally by the Army Corps of Engineers for rating pavement. And what it's supposed to be is an objective, you know, if two people go out there and rate the pavement based on the same way, they should be within a 10% tolerance of one another, any given day of the week, you know, any two people who know the system. It's consistent, it's repeatable. So as you further your system and update it every three to five years, you'll see consistent data points and you'll be able to build on those and be able to see real trends. What is my pavement actually doing? And, you know, better, even more accurately plan for the future. So the way we determined whoever we want to inspect is we had a lot of conversations with Tom, Hal, and the rest of the staff here. And we determined, okay, all of our major thoroughfares, our collectors and our minor and major arterials, we definitely want to look at all of those. So let's look at every single one of those. And then for the local streets, there is just such a high volume of them, we decided, let's look at representative sampling. We looked at a handful in every district and we tried to evenly distribute it among age. So some of the newer ones and some of the older ones. So we're not just looking at, you know, just one type. So we got a pretty good representative area that way. And if you can see here, all these little green dots, this is everywhere we look at in the city. So we drove around, I was one of the people on, we had four of us, driving around, taking data points, recording distresses. And that's how we developed our system. I didn't mention that the feedback from y'all for the Wookie Map survey that we submitted earlier on in the project process, that also played heavily into us deciding where to inspect, especially on those local streets. If we, if an area we knew we were having issues, you know, people had durability issues, saw things of concern, we took, made sure to take a look at those, try and mitigate that, so.
I know this is a silly question, but I want to know the answer.
Sure.
What's the definition of arterial and collector streets?
So me just being a pavement guru, not quite as familiar with the traffic side of things, I do know that a major arterial and minor arterial are more. So those, those connect, those connection points, those majorly traveled streets that then gets you to the collector and then from the collector you'll go to typically a residential.
So the collector is less traveled than the arterial?
Correct. So the arterial split up in this case into two kind of major and minor.
Okay.
So, you know, familiar with the city, your majors would be your universities, your John Ben Shepard Parkway's, collectors, and if I'm going to speak here, correct me, you know, 31st, I think, Maple Avenue. And then you have your, of course, your local residential streets.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So this goes into the, what I was segueing to a moment ago, our inventory. So our inventory, that's just our basic, our overall network, what makes up our street network, right? So we have things like different types of use, whether it's an arterial or a local, those are very differently used, a lot different traffic patterns, a lot different distresses you're going to see out there, a lot of different conditions most likely, right? We also have planning to our inventory, we have our age, location, obviously geographically. And one of the big points I wanted to note on is the age because like I mentioned before, you know, we do have a really good base out here. We have good pavement design going into our streets. However, once you get to a certain point, it is going to be necessary to take a little more action than just the typical localized maintenance or low cost maintenance, if you will. So while that is a priority to try to take these younger streets that are going to need better condition over here and make sure those stay in a high condition, we also need to be allocating funds here to start to get these guys back from the bad to the good. This isn't directly saying bad and good, this is just saying old versus new. But you can see here, the, you know, last construction date of a lot of the pavement network is 50 years older. And what I mean by...
Not that much. Wow.
And it's a little surprising, I know. And this is done based on a detailed review of all of the as-built and construction documents that the city had on hand, which was pretty extensive. And then beyond that, for the shoots we didn't have, detailed aerial imagery, historical aerial review, where we looked through tons of those old little thumbnail circle aerials to find out which, at what time they went from dirt to paved. So that was fun. But what it came up with is this distribution of the age here. Now, one thing to keep in mind here is, you know, a lot of times you'll do an additional surfacing, a seal coat, addition of aggregate and asphalt binder to the surface of a road. That's not going to define the age. The age is going to be when did it was the last constructed with base and service course, a full reconstruction of that pavement. So a lot of these surfaces, while the surface you're actually, your wheels are on, maybe 10 years old or less, the actual road surface down beneath is in the 40 to 50 of greater range.
So is that a hundred dollars a square yard?
Yeah. Unfortunately. Again, those aren't actual numbers. That's just a representative comparison.
When was the last time we had a master plan, Transportation Master Plan?
2007?
Seven, eight?
Well, that time.
We still have.
I don't know how to ask questions like that, okay?
Now, I'm not trying to paint a picture of, you know, of just demise or...
Now, for someone not trying, you're really...
I will tell you this, to me, maybe it's a little different to me because I see, I've seen so many different systems and networks in the past and this isn't anything completely out of the ordinary, you know, these things are, we can get there, it's just it's going to be a process, right? It takes time, like anything else. It's just, it's a matter of being smart, being strategic and just setting intermittent goals and just trying to achieve that, you know.
Do you have in this or no, of this 55% that are over 50, are most of those the side streets?
Well, so, and I don't have it here, I do have it, if I could pull it up here, but if we, if I took this same sort of graphic and I applied it to just, now, this is everything. This is including all the locals, all the local streets, so all these little white ones here, so everything.
Right.
If we take those out of the mix and we just look at the major thoroughfares, it's a similar distribution?
It is.
Yeah, it is. One thing to maybe hold on to though is the fact that the local streets, like I said, they're not getting used as heavily. So we're going to see generally, for the older pavements, a little better condition than on the major thoroughfares. Because they're going to age a little bit, but you're going to see that rutting, you're not going to see that.
Yeah, I was hoping those were the local streets.
And those aren't going to probably, I don't use the word require, like it's a guarantee, but require maybe fold-up reconstruction as soon as some of the other ones that are heavily used. You know, those, a lot of those are probably operating just fine with the condition they're at. There's no need to go in there and spend beaucoup bucks to try and rehab those guys, but...
There are a lot of them, so.
Right. There's a lot of them and those, you know, those are important just to know, you know, make sure if we are doing, you know, seal coat type of work and things like that, we're just in on the right streets. We don't want to do them where it's not going to have much of a benefit. So that's one of the things that we're trying to identify here is where are we going to get an effect or a benefit out of, out of starting that money, right?
Something that, I guess, kind of university a couple of years ago, we seal coated because we were afraid we weren't going to get to it soon enough and we weren't. And it did help us for a year or so, but you can see where that seal coating, you wouldn't want to do that normally. We did that because it was kind of just a Band-Aid to get it past it. But if we kept doing that on all our streets with a seal coat, it's a waste of money.
Sure, sure. So from that, I'll go to the next, which is our condition. So maybe this graphic I showed you at the very beginning here, this is the, called the pavement management sort of philosophy or mindset, if you will. The important thing is to try to just make intermittent progress, try to get up to this level, you know, maybe this fair to satisfactory range in the future, you know, as time permits. This, so PCI, for those who don't know, is Pavement Condition Index. It's a number we get from the ASTM, the evaluation method we follow. It's a number from zero to 100, 100 being brand-new pavement, zero being completely failed. This, we have a condition of 55 is our overall weighted average, based on everything we looked at. So that puts us right here into the low fare to high pour range. Again, this is not out of the ordinary. There are a lot of cities that have very similar conditions. This isn't, you know, something where most cities are in the 86 range, we're in the 55 range. So, you know, not, no doom and gloom here. Large networks, you know, it takes a lot to rehab and to keep up with them. So the goal is to get better. And you can see a distribution of the different conditions up there, sort of a, you know, like you would imagine more heavily weighted in the fair to poor category here, right around the middle, with some in the poor range and some in the bid range. Like I mentioned before, the locals, at least, will be inspected. The average there is a little higher, rough here in the 60 range, while the more heavily used streets are down to more in the 55 range. So what we do is we set a value, the critical PCI is a point at which, once you reach this point, typically the lower cost maintenance is typically no longer considered beneficial for the pavement. So you want to try to stay above that value and mitigate getting to that point. So the pavements that are there or below there, you know, that's when we're going to start spending, like we show here, mill and overlays, reconstructions. When you're above that, you can still apply that minor, the seal codes, the crack seals, the localized maintenance, just are going to be affected there. So, you know, objectively speaking, about half above, half below, it's important to keep these guys up here while trying to bring as many of these as we can and as time permits. They're not currently. So you kind of see the typical curve, what, you know, new pavement will do. It will sort of hold on to good for a while without any treatment. And once it gets to a certain point, this becomes a little steeper. So what you see is you see cracks that start to open up, those start to get bigger, they start to let water in and that leads to more distresses. So if you can mitigate that at this phase, then this steep portion will happen at a later date. You can kind of maintain yourself up here before that finally happens.
That's one of the things that you also heard from the water side is that, you know, you have stuff that's very recent newer and you want to keep, you got to spend some money on it, but, or building new stuff, but also then you still have to worry about that older stuff.
It's a balance, definitely a balance.
So is it fair to say that since our 54 and 53 are arterials, that we could work with them in, on this chart, in the 15 dollar square yard range?
Right.
Because they're in the 53 and 54?
And as an average, they're not all in the same, but yes, generally speaking, perhaps.
That would be done now?
Yeah, for those streets. Now, there are going to be ones that are going to be down in this range.
Sure.
Some of these are a condition where, you know, it's low and this sort of played into our decision-making process and I'll show sort of our final, some of our final decisions later. But, you know, when we're down here, the thought process here is sometimes you find yourself in a range where you're approaching maybe, you know, let's say you're right here at a 52 or something, let's say. Well, you're approaching this need for, let's say, mill and overlay. Technically, I'm in this range, so it's 15 dollars though, right? Well, maybe the 15 dollars is the best spend there. Maybe your best is to let that go, spend the 15 dollars on something else that proves sees a lot of benefit from it. Let this go until it gets here, if there's not a safety issue or a safety concern, and spend the money when it becomes available. You know, does that make sense? So there's a little bit of an art to it, I guess you could say. But this is the overall, overall process and mindset and it's just important to, like I said, it's shifting that mindset from being reactive to being proactive. So as you can see, based on this condition, grading scale here, this is the exhibit which we delivered as our final PCI values based on the areas we did inspect. You'll see a lot of the greens, a lot of the more major streets we have green, where I'm sure you're aware, there's been recent construction. For example, over here on, is this John Ben Shepard and Grandview, these two stretches here, I know they've been both reconstructed more recently. A stretch of 8th over here near where we are now. So these are the conditions as we found out in the field in an overall schematic.
Why does Dixie not go all the way to Beaufort? Is that, is that no city? It is Dixie.
No.
Right here?
At some point, it stops around 58th or so and then goes into county?
Up to here.
Yes.
Up to here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I thought all of Dixie, but it doesn't go all the way. Okay.
And one thing to note too is that when we did begin this project, it began back in, if I can remember correctly, kickoff was end of summer, early fall last year. There have been a few streets that have been annexed since then that are now part of the city, which we weren't able to inspect because it happened after, you know, too far along in the project process, if you will. North Stretch of Faudry, Stretch of Murphy down there, for example. Okay, so now we're going to get into the fun stuff, talking money. So this is by no means a, this is what we need to do, otherwise we're doomed, like I said. This is, we ran a bunch of analysis to see what happens to our overall PCI values, what happens to our backlog if we apply certain amounts of, when we're looking here, we're not, just keep in mind, we're just looking at major rehabilitation. So we're just looking at our mill and overlay and our reconstruction, for example. So our high-cost capital projects. So we split up into two groups. First, we looked at arterials and collectors, so our major thoroughfares. And we said, where is our current PCI? What has it been doing over the years, deterioration-wise? How's it going to continue in the future? And then by assigning costs through diligent research of historical bid information in the area and the areas of the streets that are present, how much money is going to be applied for certain rehabilitation types? And we have a program called Paver, which is very powerful for running this sort of analysis for large networks of streets. It can tell you what it will do in the future if you apply X amount of money, if you choose not to, what your total backlog will become if you don't spend any money versus if you only spend a little bit, and so on and so forth. So what we found here is our arterials and collector streets. We ran different price points just to see what it would do to our, now, keep in mind, this is general, to our network over the next 10 years. What I did was I highlighted a point, which is the first of our data points, which brings us into the positive. We had discussed the goal amongst ourselves of if we could get, you know, four or five points every 10 years, that's definitely on the right track. And eventually, we're going to start finding ourselves, like I said, up in this fair, approaching the satisfactory range. So this is, looking at the arterials and collectors, you can see we have a major decrease to our backlog. If we weren't to fund any work, our backlog would grow into the $200 million range at the end of 10 years. It grows by less than half that if we're able to... It grows by less than half that if, if we're able to apply a substantial amount to, to reconstruction. So this usually raises a lot of questions, so I'll.
What are we doing now? If I recall, we were looking at, we need the increase on the maintenance from two point five to five point two, is that correct?
I believe we said. Five point six, five point seven, yes sir. I think that'll, that'll be another slide here. This is CIP projects, so this is the larger projects, more like reconstruction or mill and overlay. So this is not the same as.
Just in the regular repair maintenance we're budgeting.
And so this is a really interesting chart and then it's kind of a forecasting chart, you know, it's again, you're, you're having to make a lot of assumptions and determinations and things like that. Because you can't be exact in this, but that, that would indicate, I believe it's ten million?
Uh, this, this line is that, yes.
Right. Is that if you, if you wanted to appreciate or make your roads better in general, you know, about ten million a year in capital type projects like CIP projects. So if you're at five million a year, it would indicate based on the analysis that we would still decline at, at rate. Whether that's better or worse than what was declined in the past, I don't, I don't know that we've analyzed that, but, but that's what this kind of forecasts. And this is for the collectors and arterials, the larger roads.
Correct. So, and I took on some notes here, just got to know this, it speaks a little more sometimes than just a, a number, but. Looking at minor arterials, since that falls in the middle between our collectors and our majors, for every five million dollars we spend, we're able to reconstruct about one and a quarter miles of streets. So you can see, imagine at that range, we're doing about two and a half miles a year. Put in perspective, I think the Grandview and John Ben Shepard, those are both about two miles, as well as the recent university project.
The projects that we're.
The ones upcoming, I'm sorry. Just to put it in, you know, perspective as to the things we made, maybe in recent, recent years.
And, and we haven't funded it this way in the past, from my understanding. So when you look at this, say, we did a bond here recently and, uh. So the city would bond money as it found it really necessary to grab some.
You'll add a million dollars a mile and no longer applies.
Yeah, two miles of, of university is seven point five million a mile, was it? No, it was thirteen point nine, seven million for construction.
So. This is normal for both municipal?
Normal, I mean, I don't want to commit too much to, to an incident there, but I mean, it's, it's not out of the ordinary, I guess I'll say.
Whether cities are, are funding to that degree, I guess would be a question. Do you know if cities look like they're able to fund to these levels?
Some, some are, some are. And, you know, I mean, I will say, yeah, generally the ones that are funding closer to this level, and I know this is relative to size, obviously, but this level for, relative to their size. We are seeing PCI's closer typically to the sixty to seventy and above range more of an average, especially if they've been doing it year over year. It really just depends on the amount of time they've been putting, you know, the attention to the street network.
It is, it is a balance, especially for y'all in terms of having to find how we, we achieve those funds. But then also if, if we don't attempt to get somewhere, obviously then we'll eventually, that, that costs when you really have to reconstruct like university, it escalates, it becomes a lot more.
And you're right, Tom, for most of you, they'll say, this is the balance, right? Because there's hundreds of millions of dollars or needs and you only have so much money. So you've really got to determine what's the best use of your resources.
So, Baron, we're just talking about it, what has been done in these, in these past years? On, to try to address some of those maintenance issues?
On a routine basis, it's basically our seal code and crack seal, minor maintenance type projects.
But I mean, I mean, budget wise, what has been provided? I mean, has that been increased? Has, has it been increased in these past few years?
Yes, maybe it has.
Okay.
But not significantly, but it has been increased. And any reconstruction that you currently see is typically a result of a bond issuance that.
It's not in your budget, that's why, I mean, they just have bonds so often, for it gets so bad. Instead of, instead of, I mean, instead of funding this nine point nine million dollars a year. If we, we waited till twenty thirty, it would be a hundred and ninety-seven million dollar bond. Is that a fair statement?
If, if you want to tackle everything at once, yes.
Well, yeah.
I, I will say to, to further answer your question too, it's, it's not, it is extremely common to see the needs far outweigh what's, what's achievable. That's, that's why it's important to be, to be smart and to, to apply, you know, your efforts where they're most effective. You know, you could spend, for example, we could spend the same money every year without much rhyme or reason to our plan yet. Should I close? I know the kids want to hear too. You know, spending the same amount year over year, you know, we could see honestly a little, a little improvement if we were just too able to better allocate those funds.
Right, like more, more planned use of.
From a more educational standpoint, right? Not, not much, but some, of course.
So when you look at like, right now, you see, I'll ask you to drive university between the Loop and Andrews Highway. That's not the portion that we're rebuilding right now, but if you'll drive, especially the interior lanes, to me seem more evident, but all of it is, is there. But drive it and, and kind of watch the road surface.
Right over here.
Keep watching for traffic.
Yeah.
Keep watching for traffic, but kind of watch the road. You'll see, uh, it's starting to decay and Fifty-Sixth Street especially. Go up to JBS and drive Fifty-Sixth Street, go both directions, but you will definitely.
Fifty-sixth.
Fifty-second. This is a problem I have ever since we annexed Fifty-Sixth.
But both of those have increased traffic, not only with, you know, the university as well as the schools there.
Yes, sir.
You've got Compass and you've got, um, the STEM.
Yes, sir. And that, so all that happening, but as we see, we're going to start, my interpretation is that we're getting to the age in time that we're going to start seeing more of them pile on us. And so we, we are requesting that we look for funds to see if we can do better. But that's, it's not an easy task and I'm not thinking that you should be able to just do it.
One, one question is, is that, is there anything different that we can do with the developers when they, when they put in their streets outside of number of lanes? I mean, is there a different type of, of street that they can, that we can get?
You mean in terms of the, the standard for the road construction? We, we, they typically follow the standard on the, on the city road.
But I mean, is there anything different you can do now that we have increased traffic, do you think, or you would recommend?
There, there are things, now, we are having, a part of this study is to give us some recommendations on, on what we have and how it looks and how it's performing. I would say in general, our street design with the upgrade that we have, I think is a pretty so- solid design. But yes, if you want to get into some of the major streets or the intersections, you can go as far as concrete. Would like, we are looking to put concrete in major intersections. All that turning and everything is really rough on pavement. But concrete is significantly more expensive than asphalt.
The only thing I would add to that, Tom, is that when we look at some of these roads, especially in these newer development areas. We really need to think about not just within the next five years, but the next fifteen, twenty years. So where a two lane may work, you really got to think about what is that road, what is that area, where will the development happen? And whether or not we need to be doing a five or a, or a seven lane road as now, as opposed to having to wait to do it later.
Which, okay, in a residential, that would not.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
You're talking about around.
Kind of the major roads, I think.
Well, you know, it seems so daunting because what you're saying is that if we adopted the five million dollars a year. We can only do one and a half miles of road? Am I understanding that right?
We're kind of mixing apples and oranges here, I think. What, what, what he's talking about here, these are the major roadways. And these are reconstruction basically, or mill and overlay. So the five point six six million, that's the seal code programs, the crack seal and that type of program.
That's the lesser program of doing less.
That's, and right now, last year our budget, the previous year our budget was one point seven million. Last year we asked for an increase of seven hundred thousand and council was very good to us and we're at two point four million now. But in this analysis, we came up, it looks like five point six six million would be a good number for us. Now, whether that, that can happen or not, that's, you know, what we've all, y'all have, y'all have to wrestle with, but this number is a separate number.
But, but yeah, I see that. But when he said five million dollars does a million and a half, I mean, one and a half miles of road. Is that new construction or is that doing this, this major hundred dollar?
Well, that reconstruction on, actually.
It's, it's doing the hundred dollar, that's like something.
That's just to give a, a preference point, if we're going to do a full depth re, full reconstruction, entire road section, all the way down to the, the bottom. And that's on a minor arterial, for example, we're at the middle of the road between collector and major arterial. Now, if, if we were to do, let's say, a mill and overlay, we'd get over five miles of the same street, just because of the cost difference, right? So this is just to give a ballpark, just, but every, every piece of work doesn't need to be that.
And that's where you have to look at the specific street, because if you do a mill and overlay on a street that's already failing on base, you've just wasted a lot of money.
Showed, I showed an example of that here, actually.
You were talking about that going west, or excuse me, going east on university, correct?
Yes, sir.
Where we're stopped on.
Yeah, going further east. Well, no, I think we're probably looking close to having reconstruction on there. I think that's the way we, we priced it in the plans.
So let me ask you this, and man, I agree with you, you know, we're, we're going to have to bite the bullet on some of this and I don't even know how. Anyway, okay, the problems that we've had getting the existing part of university done. I mean, that may be, that was like an elephant giving birth on that. Are we looking at that?
You're giving birth to an elephant, right?
Did, are, are we looking at that, the same kinds of problems to do this major work?
Yes.
Which makes it more.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't have property.
The, the biggest problems we had with university as a, the part we're reconstructing now, is the right of way was confined. And so we didn't have an appropriate amount of right of way. So we did have to buy some properties and still we're squeezing a five lane road in a very narrow right of way.
Right.
And optimally, we would have, you would like to have a seven lane section there because it's seven lane on the east and it's seven lane on the west. And so you would like for that to be a seven, but a seven lane was going to cost substantially more money. We would have had to buy a lot of housing. So the right of way is a real key item for us, something that we try to work on with developments. When the developments are coming in, it's not something that we like to do, but we really need to make sure that we have enough right of way for the long term, like Mike was talking about. And sometimes when you build a three lane road and then expand it to a five later, again, your use of money may not have been the best. Let's say you can use that three lane for twenty years, then maybe it's not so bad, or thirty years. But if you are going to need to expand that in ten years, you really would have been better off in money to build the five.
Sure. Well, and really what I meant was, you know, like just the paving of university.
Right.
You know, we, we've got a company now, sort of, and within the next year, they may get started, right?
Right.
I think the limitation on, on vendors was, there was a lot of other work happening around.
But I mean, but, but we're, are we not going to run into some of the same?
Very much so.
So we'll set aside this money, it may grow, Peggy will find a place to put it and it's going to grow and. And the cost to do it is going to grow.
That's part of that fifty percent figure that we talk about, because that's what we're seeing, is that it's that much more for us to get a contractor than it used to be.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, Tech dot passed down a lot of funds last year and put out a lot of projects at the same times we're trying to get a project. And we're hoping Tech dot passes down a whole lot more funds, you know, but, but well. But no, you're right.
Many, 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 many.
Next.
So, 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 yeah, these numbers, these, these different projections here, these are all different types of work. It's not all just reconstruction, it's not all just local. It's, it's a mix of, you know, mill and overlay reconstruction in this case, so mill and overlay much less costly, obviously, but you can't do it everywhere. They'll show a really good example of, of where that's, you know, seen actually out here, where we maybe, maybe could have applied something else.
Kevin, we've got about fifteen minutes.
Thanks. Okay. I, I'll go over this maybe a little more quickly because like, like I mentioned before, this is, what we're looking at here is we're looking at pavement. For the, the needs purely from a condition standpoint, and we're applying it to this critical PCI methodology. So anything under here, according to the program, needs major reconstruction. Now, like we said, for our local streets, they may not all need it. They may have a low PCI value. That may be due to surface cracking and things like that, which may not be of a huge concern. Maybe it's not heavily traveled and maybe it's deteriorating at a much lower rate. So we're looking at our local street network, it's a lot more vast network than our arterials, there's a lot more miles of street there. So these, I don't want these numbers to be daunting and to think, well, maybe we need to spend that money, we need to spend, you know, X amount more on, on our locals. This is just from, you know, like I said, the distribution of the pavement conditions applied over the entire area. So it's also extrapolated, we didn't look at every single little street, we walked, you know, a small percentage of them. And then we assumed that same condition over the whole area. So, you know, this is to be taken sort of with a grain of salt, but just to present, you know, that same condition, that same methodology and mindset applied to the locals. Where is that played out?
And this is still not the budget, is it?
No, this is, this is still. This is still major.
This is a major one. So, so this may not have as much of an impact as, you know, the streets where we, we, we see us spending more on our major capital projects. Probably not, you know, there's a handful, you know, or downtown sections of streets and neighborhoods like that, where we're going to be doing some, some reconstruction. But this isn't going to apply over the whole citywide network like, like the arterial network is. If, if, if nobody has any questions here, I'd like to go to a couple of example photos and sort of show some examples of how this conditions and the maintenance sort of tie together. And, and what, what kind of means what you've seen out there. So the, all, all this analysis ran through from, from a condition perspective and based on the size, the scale, the cost. What we thought as being sort of reasonable, sticking under that maybe say ten million, ten million dollars a year mark or less. We identified a few stretches of projects that from a condition standpoint were the higher need. Or the higher need as identified by, you know, talking with the city staff. So this, this is our recommendation that again played into the overall transportation master plan. Where Jeff Wicker, who maybe you may have met too, he used to go at the other presentation, took into account things like future traffic plans, current, you know, current volume, future volume, things like that. And sort of took this consideration, threw it in the pot with everything else to come up with our overall CIP recommendation. So I believe these program years are according to his plan. But from a pavement perspective, these are handful of projects I got thrown into our overall analysis. This is a summary of, from, from our overall systems operations standpoint, our current maintenance. We have signal and operations in there, or maintenance operations in there too. What we have is, and we ran a similar analysis as you saw with the other graphs, which I didn't do in the same detail here, just for time's sake. But showing what we currently spend and have in spending on our local and collectors, based on our analysis of the current. For this, we look at actual distresses and we say, what types of distresses and what can we actually treat at a localized level? And we came up with some overall, this is a need per year to handle these sort of needs from a maintenance standpoint. So this is back to that two point four million maintenance budget that we've had over year over year. And then projecting out what our needs identify for each set of streets, total to about five million plus the six hundred thousand.
That, if that was due to number one, did it help more so than, or is it, is it associated with cost also in the traffic box?
It's the, it's the number, but for example, I, I have at every singleized intersection. It's the, it's the number, but, for example, I have at every singleized intersection, hundred and thirty intersections, I have signal cabinet out there, and I need to be replacing signal cabinets just to keep up with their useful life. I'm falling behind on that, that aspect, so it's just more to maintain.
So this should allow us to keep those green streets green, if you will.
This is the number that we talked about before. This is an annual budget.
I believe this may or may not have been in Jeff's presentation too. So, with that being said, I wanted to show a couple of examples. This is back to those projects we had recommended, we had shown in that table. Here's some photos of kind of what we see, why we made recommendations. Quick overview, this is East University, Grand View to Tanglewood. It's a major arterial street, PCI value is very poor, thirty-four. SCI, that's a structural condition index, it's like PCI, but all it looks at is things like this alligator cracking and net running, right? So it only looks at the structural issues. So, a low SCI means it's at a location where mill and overlay would not be recommended, for example. Where you're not going to get any value from your money, you're going to probably see the same issues pop up to the surface shortly after, afterwards. So, like we discussed before, that's many construction date nineteen sixty-three, based on aerial imagery, so it may be in ballpark. What we see here, multiple seal coats, so the seal coat that we've been using is multiple layers of that, and you see the asphalt binder sort of coming to the surface on the wheel paths there. What that's, what that does is it creates sort of a surface where water can sort of sit. It creates sort of a, not as much of a rough or friction type of surface. Hydroplaning could be an issue. And then the alligator cracking and running, of course, which you can, you can't really see the running as well, but can see that pattern we talked about. So this is just an example, like we discussed before, where a full depth reconstruction would be recommended. Mill and overlay probably would be able to mitigate the issues we're seeing here. This is South Dixie Boulevard, very similar. I guess it shows this because it's a really good photo of that. Alligator cracking I talked about, you can see it looks just like the back of an alligator. That takes place over time after repeated loading, some either excessive loading or just repeated over the years. Similarly, an area where mill and overlay may not be the best course of action, but a full depth reconstruction would do a solid issue.
Is that the area that floods quite a bit, or is that just leading to where the draw is?
This is down south of.
South of the intercept. The fire training.
That does flood a lot.
It does. Since that's. Monahan's draw, yeah.
This is West Murphy Street, so not as poor condition, you can see the PCI and SCI values there. We're looking at forty-three or thirty-four here, PCI here, we're looking at fifty-four. So, still in the poor category, but not as bad. We're seeing some localized areas of that sort of cracking, right? So areas like this where you have localized alligator cracking and running, that can usually be mitigated through like, say, localized patching, or that full depth reconstruction in, you know, focused areas, so we're not spending as much money, not wasting our funds. And then a mill and overlay on everything else typically helps solve the other issues.
How effective is the patching? How long does it hold?
The patching?
Yes.
Depends on the quality of the patch, not to avoid that.
You're talking about a full reconstruction type patching, which actually went in, you cut in about, say, a hundred feet of roadway, took the whole roadway out and reconstructed it. That should be pretty effective, that's base and everything. When you talk about the patch we do out in the street for smaller holes, like we do normal maintenance, that still, again, kind of depends on why it's failing. You know, if the base beyond where you're repairing it got wet and continues to degrade, then the patch may not last very long. If you did a really good clean patch and got it in there, then it could last hugely.
So.
Thirty-five years. Three to five.
Is the seal coat, is that in the preventive maintenance or the minor rehab? When you're talking about seal coat?
Preventive maintenance, mostly.
So the minor rehab, the mill and overlay is the thirty dollars. What's in the fifteen, when you tell us that, what is that?
Fifteen, you might have a light, just an overlay?
Thin overlay, a very, yeah, very thin resurfacing. It wouldn't reset the PCI value to a hundred, it wouldn't be considered a new construction, a new surface, if you will. But it would help mitigate a lot of, that's usually really good for surfaces, let's say you have a lot of graveling, a lot of the surface is sort of degrading, because you don't have a lot of structural issues or cracks or, you know, things like that. It's just it applies a nice nuke to the surface, therefore, you know, apply new friction to the surface. And then one of the examples, we kind of talked about this before, I wanted to show an example of where, you know, I mentioned a mill and overlay not being properly preferable at an area like this, or an area like this. If we don't patch this area here, we're probably going to see this in the future. So I'll show an example, and hope this doesn't hurt anyone's feelings, but we have talked about it in a meeting we had, which, we actually didn't see the issue when we first inspected in September, but we revisited it in February after our meeting, because it was brought to our attention. This is Thirty-first Street. I can't remember exact location here, but this is an exact location we inspected, so a, about a hundred foot long stretch of street that we inspected. And you'll see here, this is the photo we took of this lane right here in September of last year, when the mill and overlay that was performed was about a year old, I guess, maybe so. And then in February the following year, so five months later, this is what it looked like.
It's an example where a mill and overlay over replaced it, it was not in good shape.
So our report shows a PCI of ninety-five, which is almost perfect, and no recommendations for rehab. And then it was brought to our attention to go look at it, and I almost called the guy I work with and yelled at him and said, how did you not see this? And he showed me the photos, he said, I didn't see it, and sure enough, this was the difference. So, just to show, you know, spending, you know, when we're spending money on the streets, it's a large scale spending. We want to make sure we're getting the most out of our dollars, so we're not wasting it essentially. So, a good pavement management system in place to help decide when and where to apply these sort of efforts can be really important in the long run, or even in the short term, as we can see here, so.
So it's our job to try and avoid that, and it's our job to try and not to get into the situation such as university. One of the things is universities look such a bad nature where we're rebuilding it right now, that, you know, you would say, okay, our bids came in too high, or we couldn't get bids, let's wait a couple of years, right? If your road will hold up for a couple of years, you'd hold off, maybe see if the economy slowed down and you could get some better pricing. But that road's just in such bad condition, there's no way we could do it.
Is there, you know, a lot of cities build roads out of concrete. So that's probably because there's a longer life attribute to that, but there's also significant cost. But when you look at what that life, that additional life is worth, does that balance out versus a asphalt road?
The analysis that I normally see, and he may have better information than I do, is that, yes, concrete over the lifespan is comparable to asphalt or better. The problem is the upfront, is being able to do it upfront. And it's kind of the same thing here, which is not y'all's fault, it's not anybody's specific fault, but the same thing here, you know, if we can't afford to put the money in upfront, and we are, at a certain level, we dabble along, eventually, some things come up to us. But yes, sir, I think, I think concrete, at least, that's my, what I've seen is an analysis.
Actually, the same thing, and we'll, you know, even, we do the same thing on airports, for example, and we'll see the same thing there. Over the life cycle, it's similar cost. One of the benefits to it, downside is the upfront cost. One of the benefits could be looked at as less interruptions to traffic, so you're not going to have to do it as often, but when you do, it's going to be more costly.
So would you use the combination of doing concrete intersections and then paving going out? Or is it all concrete, or, well, you go, you said concrete intersections.
I think that's, you know, that's going to be at the city's discretion, I think, but I think for, yeah, for more heavily traveled areas, it's definitely none of that.
But you can do the concrete and then have paving come into the concrete.
And, and yes, and again, it comes down to availability of funds versus what you can do. So, like university, we are putting in concrete intersections that Dixie.
Through the water. Through the low water.
Through the low water, um, Muske. There are several intersections that will be concrete. And then, so you do that, if you can afford the concrete street, you know, you might try to do the concrete street, especially more heavily loaded roadways, you certainly don't, I don't know if it is affordable for residential. But there are cities that do that, but it's not easy.
And we're, and we're helping a small amount to alleviate this by the ordinances now that doesn't allow the big trucks to drive and ride.
Yes, very much so.
That's going to help us.
Kevin, thank you. Unfortunately, we're over time. We had to fail you. Appreciate the presentation pretty much.
I appreciate you getting in your audience.